Ya Ali Madad, we are delighted to welcome you to the first webinar of the Economic Planning Board. Hope you and your families are safe. Joining us today, we have four very special people. I will quickly do a round of introduction. There is Chairman Rafiq Dosani with us, there is Mr. Murli Natarajan, Mr. Shabir Merchant and Mr. Rafiq Malik. During these ninety minutes, we hope to be able to give you the following insights. The economic impacts of COVID-19 both in India and globally. The effects on small and large businesses, including the government actions to help. The impact on people in existing jobs and those who are entering the job market. And finally, how hopeful can we be for a quick recovery? And which sectors will recover fast and which will lag behind? So let's get started. I am excited to introduce you to our moderator for this evening, Mr. Shabir Merchant. Many of you know him, but I will still do a quick introduction. Shabir is the founder and chief value creator of Value Lead Consulting. A firm based in Bengaluru in India. They partner with clients in Asia on strategic talent management, leadership development, organization transformation and top team synergy. His past experiences include being a partner and South Asia head for Hydricon Struggles. His earlier career included being the youngest general manager and human resources head at Wipro Infotech. He also serves as a board member in D C B. Welcome Shabir and over to you.
Here is what I am going to do. I am first going to go to each of our panelists and ask them some opening questions and get their opening responses that are there. And you know, then I will do a follow through questions with them and then we will have some audience questions that are there. You know, I am going to first straight away start with our first panelist, which is Rafiq Dosani. And he is joining us all the way from Los Angeles. You know, I have the privilege of introducing him, many of you have heard him earlier as well. Rafiq Dosani is the director of the Centre for Asia-Pacific Public Policy at the very well-known Rand Corporation, which is a private not-for-profit think tank. He was earlier the director for the Centre of South Asia at Stanford University in U S. And in his illustrious career, he has been an investment banker, a venture capitalist, journalist and also an agriculturist. His Jamati services include being the chairperson for the Economic Planning Board some years back, sorry, for the United States and also at India. And he has been the chairperson for Focus in USA. And he has also been a member of the board of D C B Bank earlier. Rafiq, it's really a delight to have you out here on this particular panel. You know, without any further ado, I want to pose my first question and get your opening thoughts that COVID-19, as the world is struggling with respect to the health impact of it, let's shift gears and try and look at the economic impact that COVID-19 is really creating in the U S where you are with respect to India and other global economies as well. And what we would also want to learn from you Rafiq is, if you can share with us that given your familiarity with the Indian perspective also, if you can share with us what are some of the impact you are seeing with respect to jobs, the sectors it is impacting, all businesses, large businesses, the financial capital markets that are there. Rafiq, over to you.
Thank you, Shabir. Ya Ali Madad to you, Farah and all our listeners. I will do my best to try and provide some overview before we get into the news. So the most visible large-scale effects of COVID are within India. An unprecedented lockdown across the country, effectively confining most but not all people to their homes. The government is making emergency payments to the poor and the Reserve Bank of India is injecting new liquidity into the economy. E P B has already provided details of that to the Jamat. Stock markets appear to have fallen quite a bit, almost nearing a state of panic. The indices have fallen by about thirty percent from their levels of a month ago. If you look at this, it's not very different from what's happened in almost every other country where COVID has struck. The quarantine might be voluntary, it may mandate be mandatory, but basically it's the same three factors. There is a closure, there is government support and there is stock market impacts. And then there are real impacts on the economy which I will come to in a moment. The overall message that I have of some uncertainty, some hope and ultimately confidence in the resilience of the Indian economy. First, the uncertain factors. The first uncertainty arises from the nature of the disease. The disease COVID-19 with this coronavirus, we are experiencing the first global communicable disease of this century. In 2003, the SARS pandemic also originated in China. It affected eight thousand and ninety-eight persons and killed seven hundred and seventy-four persons over eight months in twenty-nine countries. In India, SARS affected only three persons and there were zero deaths. Comparing that with COVID as of March 29th, it had infected six hundred and eighty thousand persons and killed thirty-two thousand in three months since it broke out mid-December. The reason for the big difference is that although both diseases are similarly spread by droplet transmission, COVID is able to infect more people. Already we have seen in India, one thousand infected and about twenty-five who have died. This tells us that India is in the very early stages of being affected by the virus. The first stage being that of an imported virus, second of a local transmission, third is community transmission and fourth is an epidemic. India is probably in stage two somewhere. Going by the experience of other countries that are in more advanced stages of the epidemic, including those with similar weather and population density as India, such as Brazil and Malaysia, we can expect to see a large increase in infections in the next two weeks. The second factor is the effect on economic activity, which must be seen in the context of the lockdown, now in its sixth day and which will continue till April 15th. Perhaps learning from China, the government of India instituted a Wuhan-style lockdown to the whole country. Thus they applied the partial solution of China to the whole country. The other country that did, has done a very good job of containing the virus, Korea, did not go for a lockdown, but they relied on self-quarantine and large-scale testing. India perhaps lacking adequate testing gear has gone for a lockdown mainly. The intent of the lockdown was that people would stay where they are. However, they have not done so fully. The poorest of India who work in urban settings as in city trades and as domestic workers, probably numbering at least a million are moving home. This is because they cannot survive for more than a few days without jobs in the city. So their best hope is to head home. This was not foreseen by the government. And we have all seen the chaos that has resulted. They are a significant source of new risk for the disease. The World Health Organization has already noted that India's effectiveness in controlling COVID-19 is critical for the future of the pandemic globally. For those left in the cities, the lockdown means that there is no source of income for most businesses. Certain businesses such as retail trades and the hospitality sector of travel, tourism and food are severely affected. So that's the first uncertainty. The second is what is the government doing? It's clear that the government is wanting to respond actively. So far it has responded with a hundred and seventy thousand crores or about twenty-two billion dollars of financial support for the poor and vulnerable populations such as farmers and seniors and some affected businesses. The support is partly in the form of cash transfer and partly other items such as free gas cylinders. In addition to government cash transfer to the poor, the R B I is injecting two hundred and fifty thousand crores or thirty-five billion dollars by reducing its refinance rate, cash reserve ratio, undertaking corporate bond repurchases, deferring interest on term loans and some working capital loans. Its main purpose is to increase the flow of liquidity since businesses are facing shortages of cash. While it is something, it is like the government cash transfer program too little. It is also negative for savers who rely on interest income, where interest rates have already fallen by a percent or more on fixed deposits. Overall, we realize that this is a very small amount. To get a sense of it, India's commitment, including the government support and the R B I support is about fifty-seven billion dollars or about point-two percent of G D P. Most developing countries are spending fifteen percent of G D P or more. Even China is spending six hundred billion or six percent of G D P. So I think we can expect that the government will put in more in the next few days. It will have to do so. So that's the second uncertainty. The third negative factor is that G D P growth, which already slumped to four and a half percent in 2019, is likely to be no more than two and a half percent for the January to March quarter. So from four and a half to two and a half. And in the April to June quarter, it will be minus five percent or worse. Even with international oil prices as low as twenty-five dollars a barrel, although this will reduce some of the shock, it will not be enough to stop negative growth. Most Indian businesses already face a severe cash shortage due to the earlier slowdown. So even when it recovers, it will be difficult to recover quickly after the epidemic passes. So that's the third uncertainty. Now turning to the sources of hope and ultimately confidence, the first is agriculture. Unaffected by the viruses and helped by last year's heavy rains, a bumper crop is expected this year. So there is no expectation of shortages of food and there should be no sense of panic about this aspect. Further, good agricultural performance will help the economy. Agriculture is fifteen percent of G D P. So it will help the economy recover quickly after the epidemic dies down. Industries dependent on agriculture will do well. Pharma, healthcare and so on will all do well. The second source of hope is that historically, countries that have suffered disease-related economic downturns have tended to recover quickly. China, for instance, did not suffer any significant slowdown after SARS in 2003, nor did the U S suffer economically after the swine flu, which affected twenty-two million persons in the U S and killed four thousand. In India, the swine flu affected thirty thousand people and there were fourteen hundred deaths and there was no economic effect. So while we know that the current epidemic will have much deeper short-term effects, we can hope that a recovery will be quick as well. And many countries whose recovery is important for India from a trade perspective such as China, Korea, Taiwan, Japan and finally the U S in about a month will recover quickly. The final source of hope and confidence is that there is no overreaction and panic among the general public. So the reactions right now are much more sensible and not likely to cause their own problems, unlike in some other countries. We are not seeing, for example, the panic food buying. Finally, let me wrap up with what are good strategies for the next twelve months. First is to recognize that the pain is real now and the job losses and affected businesses will continue to suffer for the next few months before a recovery starts in about four to six months. The pain in the short term could be severe. So it is important to plan for enough cash to tide the family and the business for several months. This is not a time for quick buying, especially with leverage. There will be plenty of opportunities still after three months, after four months. For now, be very cautious and watch for trends. As E P B has said in its guidance to you, if cash is king. If cash is king, let me note that online is queen. Many have resisted putting their businesses online even in the face of rising competition. This is a great time to rethink that strategy. Third, for those in financial markets, be aware that although some countries have started to recover, many are in the beginning of the downturn and it will be a couple of months before we know the full picture. During this time, expect markets to be volatile and highly risky. Finally, as E P B has always advised, build your human capital in a downturn through online education and training. It is your best insurance against future downturns and your best leverage for future upturns. Shabir, with that, let me hand over to you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much Rafiq for really giving us that overall picture in terms of what has happened, how COVID is really different vis-à-vis the SARS epidemic that we saw and how this is really in some countries really at the start stage and we are likely to see develop. But let me quickly now go on to our second panelist, which is there, our second speaker. And I am delighted to introduce Murli Natarajan to all of you who have joined this webinar. Murli is the C E O and also the managing director at D C B Bank. He is the non-independent executive director as well. He is also a member of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of India. In the past, Murli has had an absolutely stellar career in the banking industry across the globe. He has been associated with D C B for nearly a decade in terms of steering it to new heights. So Murli, wonderful to have you with us on this particular webinar today. If you can tell us about your small or medium business, what are your advice? What are your suggestions to help you overcome COVID-19? And what are your advice to help you overcome this difficult time? And what are your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Shabir, for those generous comments and introducing me. And this is very difficult time. What is this that we are going through comparable to something in the past? Actually, there is nothing that we are going through today has any comparison to the past. You can't compare with nine eleven, you can't compare with two thousand and eight, you can't compare with SARS because that was very small, whatever it was, it was pretty small impact. This is a massive, massive unprecedented kind of situation. If you look at the economy, there is a picture of the globe and it is closed. Okay? All businesses impacted. We can't say that the store is closed, the grocery store is closed. And despite all the efforts made by the government, you can see that shelves are empty because demand is there because people are going there. At least now they have stopped doing this hoarding business because they are now feeling comfortable that stocks would come. But the fact is that all businesses are, you know, affected. And look at the businesses that are employing large number of people. In any country, S M E are the ones who actually employ a large number of people. Okay? It provides for anywhere between sixty to seventy percent of employment. Right? And many of them have no work for the last fifteen days. Businesses are not working. So this is a very big issue. And I don't believe, I may be wrong, I don't believe that the recovery would be there obviously. Whenever we stop the lockdown and feel comfortable that lockdown may not be the, you know, may not be required any further. As long as it starts, it will take a lot of time. I think maybe even six or eight or nine months. Just at the cost of comparing with something. I believe Spanish flu which happened in nineteen eighteen took almost eighteen months. So to me, this shock that the whole world is going through may take even twelve months for coming back to some level of normalcy. And one sector that is permanently damaged in my view is the travel sector, especially the international whatever. Because all countries would put enormous amount of restrictions to stop a second or third wave of this hitting them. So there will be a lot of restrictions what I imagine will happen. Actually, things are evolving on a daily basis. So of course, we have been talking to a lot of customers. What is the main challenge that customers are facing is their payments are blocked for whatever business they have done before this lockdown. And they are not able to collect those payments. Now, in turn, those people also, those customers who have to pay our S M Es may also be expecting some payments from their customers and so on, not able to collect. Had some of them embraced more digital method, some payments may have been easier to receive. If they have relied on cash, how do you collect it? It is very tough plus collecting cash itself can cause some level of infection is what people fear. So one lesson I have learnt is that when government is giving you so many benefits for going digital, those who have embraced it are finding it slightly less. I am not saying totally relieved, but slightly lesser than others. That is number one. Number two, customers who leverage themselves without thinking. You gave a loan from the bank, you gave working capital or business expansion. What did you do? You put some hobbies in it, you bought a plot, you bought some property, which is unproductive. And you know, last three, four, five years since demonetization happened, the property prices have only either been stable or down. So there are no returns. So wherever S M E is not disciplined and corporates are, they are suffering a lot. Because they don't have any cash, they don't have the bullets to withstand this shock that is happening. So my advice is, as Mr. Dosani said, save your money. Don't try to think that this is an opportunity, opportunity will come. I am telling you, there are some friends or friends who said this is an opportunity and the market dropped twenty percent. Right? So the bottom is the one who doesn't know. Don't do anything like this, you will feel like you are trying to make something quick. Where S M E has done this, I have figured out that they not only lost the money, they also damaged their core business. Next point I want to say is that some of the S M Es that we have spoken to also feel that this will wipe out some of the competition that was weak. And since they have a stronger business model, they feel that as and when this, you know, issue starts to bottom out, they will be the people who will be able to capture more market share and more of this thing. With respect to jobs, I personally think that either there will be salary cut or there will be job loss or both. Here again, if an employee and Shabir, you are the H R expert in any case, employees who always upskill themselves, find new skills all the time are the last people to get fired by any organization. You can see that any system may jump up when you do the, you know, when the business is down and you want to reduce the number of staff, you never fire employees who are skilled and are contributing. So this is a very good time to reflect upon ourselves and say, how do I build new skills? And this is very important, not just for S M Es I am talking about, I have talked about people who are in the employment. And it applies to S M Es as well because what are the new opportunities that are coming? Dosani has told that pharmaceutical opportunity will come. Maybe there are industries that will come up which after the shock is done, people can identify those opportunities. So from whatever I can see, this is not going to end so soon. We have to conserve our energy, we have to conserve our cash, we have to wait it out, we have to be patient and make sure that you utilize the time to reflect upon your business and say, what are the changes that you can do, what are the things that you can cut out? So that when things get better, you are much sharper, much more, what do you call it, much more efficient to capture the opportunity that may arise in the few months after this. That's what I wanted to say.
But Murli, what I liked what you said was that this is not the time to take undue risk. Don't try to make a fast buck which is there and I think that's something which is so relevant. And I am just going to quickly touch upon the job market aspect that you talked about. And you know, before I do that, Murli, you were wanting to say something. So Murli, I will come to you first and then I will talk.
Yeah, sorry because you know, at times like this, one does get a little philosophical. So if I can be indulged, I will just say, when I joined the bank in two thousand and nine, one of my friend, Welwisher, he sent me a small email that really helped me to work with my team and you know, so it said, don't let what you cannot do stop you from doing what you can do. We think we can't do this, we can't do this. We have eighty branches, we have staff, we have this, we have that. We said, keep it on the side. What can we do about this? We spend energy on this. This may sound philosophical, but it did help as a team for us to, you know, better our performance.
No, thanks, thanks Murli for once again pointing us to all of us that amidst all this gloom and doom which is going around us, how do we still learn to look at the glass half-full and not half-empty? And I think, you know, from a job market perspective, what I was really trying to say in continuation to what you said, you know, I think for all those of you who are there on the webinar right now and if you are a salaried person or you have a job, you are an employed person, please keep in mind, the seatbelt sign is switched on. So when the plane is going through a turbulent time, the pilot puts on the seatbelt sign. So I think that seatbelt sign is on. Let's hope that the, you know, oxygen masks, you know, it hasn't arrived yet. But reality is this, that all companies are going to be under cost pressure as we move forward and they are going to look at manpower cost as one of the line items where they will want to work through their P and L. And that's going to be a reality. And you know, some of the things that I also foresee what's going to happen in the job market in India as we move into the next few months and the next few quarters, I think first of all, new hiring plans that are there, those are definitely going to get frozen in most industries for at least the next two quarters if not more. So whatever companies which are on a high, they were hiring and they were, you know, getting in new people, I think the whole aspect of new hiring is going to get into a freeze. I think Murli, like you said, that companies are going to be focusing in terms of salary reductions etc. And I think I am going to grade it this way, that companies are going to have different options. They are going to start with first of all, zero increments. So the days of eight percent, ten percent, twelve percent increments, forget about it at least for the next twelve months. So I think we are going to see a stage of zero increments. And if you see zero increments in your company, actually you should be happy. Right? I think, you know, I think that is a good sign, zero increments. Because the next thing they are going to do is zero promotions. So no promotions that are there, they will not increase the cost. The next thing they are going to do is salary cuts. So salary cuts are going to be here and they are going to happen across a range of industries. The next stage they are going to really take in is going to talk about leave without pay. And they will focus on alternate rostering. Alternate rostering, that they will ask certain employees to come and work for fifteen days, next fifteen days other people work. And whilst you are not working, you are on leave without pay. So you are going to find organizations are going to try some of these things out and you are going to see a situation where typically campus offers are definitely going to get deferred. So those of you youngsters who are in engineering colleges or in your M B A and you already have a confirmed offer placement, campus placement offer in your hand, please be mentally prepared that these offers are likely to get deferred. It has happened in the past. Some of them may get recalled as well, but that's something that is definitely going to come your way. And the final option that organizations are going to do is job cuts. And that's something that may happen in some industries a little more as compared to other industries that are there. I would think that there will be fair bit of government pressure which will be there on at least the large companies, not to cut jobs, but I think, you know, that's an option that organizations will resort to. So which are some of the sectors or industries which are going to see the brunt of it in terms of the tough decisions for the job industry or the talent market or the job market? If you are in the startup industry, like I am in Bangalore, Bangalore has a lot of ecosystem of startups. If you are in the startup, I think you are at high risk which is there because out there, they will start taking tough decisions as early as possible in May, if not earlier. Companies and groups which already had a weak balance sheet and their financial condition was already in a difficult stage, again out there, you are going to see that they are going to take some tough decisions very early, as early as May as possible. Like Murli said, industries like airline, travel, hospitality, I think they are in difficulty. And you know, there is no easy answer for them. And they are going to get into it maybe as early as April, May in terms of trying to see how to manage their cash and they will look at the whole element of their job cuts etc. around that are there. You know, like Rafiq also mentioned that some sectors which can show more resilience in the job market are sectors like pharma, healthcare, F M C G to a certain extent, tech to a certain extent, large conglomerates that are there, you know, good solid conglomerates that are there. You know, these are going to have more resilience to face this shock which is there. So you know, out there, they will not resort to tough decisions very quickly. But honestly, like you know, we heard from both Rafiq and from Murli, everything depends when it will be normal and what will the new normal look like? And that's something that we really don't get a sense right now. But that's a quick thought on the job market and how those of us who are into jobs are likely to see. I am going to now move into our next speaker and I am very, very personally delighted to introduce to you all Rafiq Malik. Rafiq Bhai is the chairman of Metro Brand. इस डी चेयरमैन ऑफ़ मेट्रो ब्रांड्स ही इस अ हावर्ड ग्रैजुएट एंड रफीक भाई हैव डी प्रिविलेज एंड ही इस यू नो ही हैव ग्रोन अन सिंगल स्टोर ऑपरेशन तू अन रोबस्ट कंपनी व्हिच टुडे हैव डी लार्जेस्ट नेटवर्क ऑफ़ फैशन फुटवेयर एंड एक्सेसरी स्टोर्स अक्रॉस इंडिया मेट्रो ब्रांड्स टुडे हैव अन नेटवर्क ऑफ़ 546 शोरूम्स अक्रॉस 125 सिटीज इन इंडिया एंड रफीक भाई हैव बीन डी स्ट्रांग फोर्स बिहाइंड मेकिंग डेट हैपन ही इस डी फाउंडर मेंबर एंड डी डायरेक्टर फॉर डी ऑल इंडिया फुटवेयर मैन्युफैक्चरर्स एंड रिटेलर्स असोसिएशन एंड ही इस एक्सट्रीमली एक्सट्रीमली पैशनेट अबाउट अपग्रेडिंग डी फुटवेयर इंडस्ट्री इन इंडिया रफीक भाई यू नो यू नो ऑल ऑफ़ अस लुक अप तू हिम ही इस अ सेल्फ मेड मैन एंड ही हैव एस्टेब्लिश्ड डी बेंचमार्क फॉर सक्सेसफुल रिटेलिंग इन इंडिया ब्रिंगिंग तू डी टेबल ओवर 45 इयर्स ऑफ़ इस रिटेल एक्सपीरियंस ही इस अलसो मेंबर ऑफ़ डी नेशनल काउंसल ऑफ़ रिटेलर्स असोसिएशन ऑफ़ इंडिया रफीक भाई इट इस रियली अन प्रिविलेज तू हैव यू विद पास और क्यों और मैं आपसे सबसे पहले मेरा सवाल आपके सामने जो रखने जा रहा हूं की अपने जमात में जो भी रिटेलर्स है उनके सामने ये दो समस्याएं सबसे पहले अभी ए रही है की सबसे पहली बात किस तरीके से वो अपने लैंडलॉड्स के साथ में रिलेशनशिप एस्टेब्लिश करें जिस तरीके से वो रेंट दे रहे हैं अपने शॉप के लिए या अपने प्रिमाइजेस के लिए और दूसरी समस्या है की उनके जो एम्प्लाईज है उसके बारे में वो क्या करें तो ये दो समस्या उनके सामने है आपका जो तजुर्बा है हम ये जानना चाहेंगे आपसे के आप उनको क्या सलाह मशोरा देंगे की किस तरीके से वो अपने लैंडलॉड्स के साथ में ये रेंट के बारे में चर्चा करें एक बार जबकि ये लॉक डाउन खत्म होता है और उसके आगे के लिए भी किस तरीके से वो करें और आप हमें ये भी जरा बताएं की जो लार्ज रिटेलर्स है जो बड़े ब्रांड्स है वो किस तरीके से अपने लैंडलॉड्स के साथ में फिराल नेगोशिएट कर रहे हैं रेंट के ऊपर जो की एक मेजर कॉस्ट कंपोनेंट होता है उनके लिए तो आप हमको जरा थोड़ा सा इस चीज पर भी ध्यान देंगे की उनके जो एम्प्लाईज है जिसका एक कॉस्ट है इस दरमियान वो उनको किस तरीके से पेश आए किस तरीके से उनको हैंडल करें तो ये जरा आप हमको बताएं तो वाकई में हमारे जो खास करके जमात के अंदर रिटेलर्स है उनको कुछ आइडियाज आपसे मिले रफीक भाई
थैंक यू फॉर डी काइंड इंट्रोडक्शन शबीर भाई इफ वी सी दिस वाइरस हैव बी वेरी डेमोक्रेटिक इट इस इफेक्टेड एवरी कंट्री एंड इट इस इफेक्टेड एवरी बिजनेस वेल डी स्मॉल और बिग तो एक चीज हमें ध्यान में रखनी चाहिए की आज वी आर वरेड अबाउट आवर बिजनेस जो लैंडलॉड्स हमारे को दुकानें दिए दे अलसो प्वाइट कंसर्न्ड अबाउट डी ओन इनकम सो इट इस इफेक्टेड एवरीबॉडी सो वी मस्ट रिमेंबर डेट वी विल एवंचुअली हैव तू फाइंड डी वेरी कोलैबोरेटिव अप्रोच विथ डेम तू सॉल्व डी इश्यू वी हैव तू लुक आते एच अदर्स पेन एंड सी हाउ वी कैन रिड्यूस डी पेन एंड फाइंड डी सॉल्यूशन वी हैव ऑलरेडी अप्रोच ऑल आर लैंडलॉड्स एंड रिचेस्ट आउट तू डेम वी हैव तू स्टार्ट कम्युनिकेटिंग तू डेम राइट नॉव एंड फाइंडिंग आउट हाउ वी कैन गो गेट ओवर दिस क्राइसिस सो डेट बोथ ऑफ़ अस कैन कम आउट सरवाइविंग इट्स कैनॉड बी अस वर्सेस डेम इट्विल हैव तू बी अन कोलैबोरेटिव अप्रोच स्टार्ट कम्युनिकेटिंग क्लेरिटी विल नॉट बी ऑब्टेन अंटील दिस क्राइसिस सो ऑफ़ एट लीस्ट वेंस डाउन देन ओनली एवरीबॉडी विल गेट अन क्लीर अन व्यू
And eternity, we can look forward to that. Now to your question as to what can we learn from what other countries have done? Well, what we know is that China, Korea, Taiwan, Japan to some extent have managed to control the coronavirus COVID. So it's not that it can't be controlled, but it requires a level of discipline within a country of testing and quarantining or either self quarantine or lockdown oriented. Now, India does not have adequate testing facilities. This is one of the huge issues that we are facing in India. And you know, and the other thing is that because of the migrant worker migration out in the last few days, there's a big risk of even if you had the equipment in the cities, the problem is now spreading beyond. So I think the learning that we can gather from international experience is that for those countries which either do not have enough testing equipment, which includes the United States or which are unable to effectively lock down their people or choose not to lock down as happened in the case of Italy and to an extent in Iran and Spain, they are going to see really heavy effects of the virus. And I think India unfortunately fits into that category. We can, there are some hopes now. There was a release yesterday by the Chinese government with that certain drugs that they have experimented with chloroquine and others have shown some effectiveness, particularly in near fatal or very high crisis cases. From a medical point of view, the epidemiology is not very conducive to a quick resolution of the problem. And from a resource point of view also, I think India is somewhat constrained. So I think so the generally cautious note that all of us are presenting remains valid if one looks at global experience. Back to you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much Rafik Bhai for sharing that across with us. That we have to be hopeful that we get some kind of a vaccine in the pipeline at a faster cycle time than what has happened. And I think in India, the element of caution is a critical ones. But I'm now going to come over to you, Murli. Murli, हमें यह बताइए के पिछले कुछ दिनों में Indian government ने काफी सारे actions लिए हैं और काफी सारे decisions लिए हैं। तो एक तो हमें बताइए के किस तरीके से कोई SME में हो, तो किस तरीके से ये government actions का वो पूरा फायदा उठा सकते हैं? और दूसरा आप हमें ये भी थोड़ा बताइए के हमारे जो जमात के अंदर लोग हैं जो SME में है और जो loans लिए हैं, तो किस तरीके से वो ensure करें के उनका loan एक non-performing asset नहीं बन जाए? तो ये दो बारे में, दो चीजों के बारे में आप थोड़ा सा कुछ हमें थोड़ा सा बताएंगे।
So see, India is a very complex country, Shabir, as we all know. यहां पर farmers हैं, labourers हैं, shopkeepers हैं, big corporates हैं, SME हैं, salary paid people हैं, तरह-तरह के segments हैं। When you are hit by such a big tornado, which is unprecedented, even for the best of governments, it is not possible to come up with so many magical solutions. Because every solution has to have money for implementing, number one. Number two, also you can't just throw some solutions and expect की उसका कुछ result आएगा। So, I personally believe that government is going about it in a step-by-step manner. They are collecting information from the account as to who is impacted, who is not impacted. मेरे ख्याल से, agree sector at the moment is not impacted, ऐसे ही मेरा guess है ये। ऐसे लगता नहीं है मुझे की agree sector is impacted at the moment. It is seeming like more like a rural, sorry semi-urban and urban kind of a problem at the moment. We'll see how it pans out. It is throwing out the issues like how poor our health sector was. Therefore, as Mr. Dosani mentioned, whether how quickly can we gear up? I was very, you know, I don't know if you have seen this. I was very impressed by government converting railway coaches into, I thought that was such a fantastic, simple idea without spending too much money. मतलब this tells you that we have brains and we have capability to respond to situation. मतलब हमारे से हो सकता है। So, they are responding step by step. अभी तक SMEs और salary segment के लिए और business plan के लिए, they have come up with a moratorium. Moratorium is at the moment applicable apparently to non-delinquent customers. अगर आप पहले ही delayed थे payment में, शायद आपके लिए applicable ना हो। Those clarifications are expected to come in the next two, three days. But having said that, एक blanket, उन्होंने आपको three months का moratorium, so you can call the bank and say that, "Look, I want the moratorium." But my advice would be, if you are able to service the loan, service the loan, क्योंकि अभी भी आपको ही देना है पैसे, बाद में भी आपको ही देना है, moratorium you take only if you feel that you are really strapped for cash and you need to take that moratorium. Second thing, the second point I would like to mention is that have a dialogue with your bank. Because आपने अगर मान लीजिए, business loan लिया है, mortgage loan लिया है, maybe आपका जो property है, उसका value है जिसमें आप थोड़ा सा borrow कर सकते हैं to help your, you know, working capital needs. So आप अपने bank को approach करिए. Although banks at this point in time may not be very quick or very keen to lend, but ऐसा नहीं है, they also want to do good business, they want your business to succeed. आपका business succeed होगा, तभी bank का interest मिलेगा और interest income मिलेगा। आप NPA हो जाएंगे तो bank का तो interest को होना नहीं है उसके अंदर। So, I suggest that talk to the bankers, go approach them, see what kind of resources you have and what kind of facilities that you can negotiate with the bank, so that you can tide over this issue. And I am confident RBI and government, because a lot of feedback going from bankers, there will be more schemes coming in the coming days. All of it won't come at once because it's not possible to do so. But step by step in the next one month or so, I expect more schemes to come out from both government and RBI.
Thanks, thanks. No, thank you, Murli. Thank you, आपने वो बताया हमको के अपने banker के साथ में जाके बात करो and keep watching for any other government schemes coming up. But कोई government के पास कोई जादूई छड़ी नहीं है जिसके वजह से वो कुछ लेके आएंगी और that will help out. So, I think thanks, thanks for sharing that. I'm now going to come to Mr. Rafik Malik and if he can please organize us, please ensure he is unmuted. Rafik Bhai, आपसे यह जानना चाहेंगे के अभी आने वाले समय के अंदर जिनके पास stores है, stores के अंदर footfalls जो है, वो discretionary products पे तो obviously low होंगे क्योंकि सब लोग थोड़ी सी गबराट में होंगे। They will not be losing their purse strings so easily. From a retailer perspective, how to really take care of a situation like that? और आपका अपना तजुर्बा जो metro shoes में है, किस तरीके से जब भी इस तरीके का challenge आता है, तो उसको किस तरीके से आपने metro shoes पे, you know, apply किया है to really come out of that? तो थोड़ी सी tips या थोड़े से आपके perspective उस पर आप देंगे Rafik Bhai, that will be helpful.
दोनों चीजें होने वाली है, एक तो discretionary spending भी कम होगा and footfalls भी कम होंगे। सात सात, it is also possible की जब भी ये problem खत्म होगा, there will be a lot of pressure for cash and there will be a lot of promotions and discounts throughout. तो pressure तो काफी जगह से आने वाला है, so it is going to be very, very important तुम किस तरह से अपने business को navigate करो? एक तो अपने business को एकदम ही focus करना पड़ेगा on the core items. In every business you will find की तुम्हारे 20 चक्का product range is giving you almost seventy to eighty percent of a business. Focus on the core, become narrow, become deep. You'll have to reduce the width, you'll have to simplify your business for some time. Everything from your product range, from your supply chain, everything will need to be simplified. Customers also going to focus more on essentials, necessities. तो जैसे की athletic है, home slippers है, school shoes है, those will play a major role. Start working with brands that can help you cater to those customers. तो पूरा अपने आप को, अपनी strategy को एकदम थोड़ा पहले narrow करके, stabilize करके, बाद में वापस expand करना पड़ेगा। So first will be to become very focus oriented on your product range and on your even your supply chain, that is going to be the most important thing. Secondly, आपके को ये भी ध्यान रखना है के both businesses and customers are going to change after a crisis like that. You'll have to become nimble. Does it mean more online, whatever it is, however your business has changed, whatever the external circumstances have changed, you will also need to readapt yourself and change yourself so that you become more relevant. So it's going to be a little slow, you'll have to be very nimble, very careful, very slow and gradually take your business back up. So it's going to be requiring a very careful navigation and very focused approach.
All right. Thank you Rafik Bhai for sharing those tips that are there. We will now get into some of the questions that we've been receiving. So, you know, I'm going to start with the first question which is from Sajad Nurani in Mumbai. And you know, this question, I'm going to request Mr. Rafik Dosani to really respond to us. And if any of the other panelists subsequently want to speak, please do raise your hand and we can get your views. So, here's a question. What do you think will be the indicators to show that the impact of COVID-19 is behind us and we can start taking a positive outlook in our business ventures? So the question really is that how will we know that, you know, now we are getting, beginning to get out of the crisis and the green shoots are coming up? What are the green shoots that we should be looking at? So, first to you, Mr. Rafik Dosani, if you can share some of your thoughts on that question.
Sure. Sajad Bhai, मेरे ख्याल में अगर आप और countries के experience से देखें जहां, जिन्होंने ये virus का सामना किया है कुछ success के साथ, तो मुझे ऐसे लगता है के जो supply chain है, उसको track करना चाहिए। ऐसे if you see what's happened in China, which is probably the most advanced in terms of dealing with the crisis, what we see is already that the factories have started to work and at a high level of capacity. So, you know, over here I have on my people, I, one of the people I work with is China's second largest manufacturer of automotive components. So he was telling me that already they are working at ninety percent capacity. This is actually going to be very important for India as well because initially when the recovery happens in India, the supply chains will have been quite disrupted. So we should be much more willing to look at global supply chain substitutes. Even in, even if they are not as economical in the long term, for the short term, that's going to be an important strategy. So I'd like to add to Rafik Malik's point about keeping the supply chain intact by saying, look at the global supply chain as an alternative, at least in the short term. Because those countries have geared up already very quickly and they want growth just like we do in India. So that's one aspect I would focus on in terms of watching the trends, that how are the global supply chains moving? So I recognize that there are no easy green shoots to follow other than agriculture, which we've all talked about as being a green shoot that's going to do very well. But I think these are the trends that you should observe. Back to you.
No, thank you very much Rafik Bhai for sharing that. And you know, I'm going to, I'm going to forward that question to Rafik Malik as well. Rafik Bhai, any of your thoughts in terms of if कोई अगर जो अपना retail shop चला रहा है, अपना retail business है, तो किस तरीके के indicators को देखना चाहिए जिससे उसको पता चले के हवा का रुख अभी थोड़ा सा बदल रहा है? And you know, they are the ones, you know, then they can start moving into little more positive action. Any quick thoughts from you?
So, इतना massive shock why, I don't expect a V-shaped recovery. It'll be a slow recovery, it's going to take time and it'll require a little bit of patience. There's a lot of damage being done, so it's going to be a slow recovery. And you will see positiveness coming slowly. People's confidence, customers' confidence, people's confidence to buy, it'll be a slow recovery. So as and when it starts happening, you will notice it, but it'll be a gradual slow process. It's not going to happen the way I've seen China rebound back so quickly with the kind of destruction I'm seeing in the supply chain and in the SME sector and across the board in India. Us will be a very slow process. So as some of you have mentioned, you'll have to be very patient, very resilient and gradually see how we can get this behind us.
Thank you. Thank you Rafik Bhai for sharing that. I'm taking the next question. The next question is from Shafiq Purbandarwala in Pune. And Murli, I'm going to direct this question to you and get your sense on this. So his question is, and before I do that, I'll just request the organizers to just unmute Murli because I can see him muted right now. So Murli, this is the question from Shafiq Purbandarwala in Pune. He says, "In terms of asset classes, will real estate see a major price correction going forward given that demand will be very low?" So I know you talked about it Murli a little bit earlier also when you were giving your opting comments on, you know, land and, you know, real estate to some extent. But any responses to Shafiq's question?
So I think for the past many years or many quarters now, real estate prices have been stable or down. Okay? So, that trend will continue maybe even higher because what has happened is, this shock has destroyed demand. So when demand picks up is when we can say that there are green shoots. And in my view, the first demand that might come up would be from FMCG because काफी pent-up demand release होगा अभी, but we should not draw any trend line on that to say that, "अच्छा, सब ठीक हो गया", क्योंकि patient जो है ICU में multiple organ failure के साथ पड़ा हुआ है, जब वो बाहर आएंगे, ऐसे नहीं लगना चाहिए की immediately like Rafik साहब ने बताया की कोई V-shaped वगैरह recovery नहीं होगा and all asset classes are going to be affected. But I expect definitely real estate, commercial, शायद Hitler or definitely residential also will take a hit. But there will be good quality WhatsApp called properties available at, you know, reasonable price because even builders will know की तीन-चार महीने से अगर कुछ कम नहीं हुआ, sale नहीं हुआ, तो they also will be ready to give you some better pricing. So I definitely think that real estate is going to take a hit for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, Murli. Our next question is from Zahir Merchant in Mumbai. And you know, this question I'm going to pose across to you, Mr. Rafik Dosani, because this is a, you know, a view asking a little on a global side. So here's the question, that in a post-corona world, in the long term, which countries do you feel will perform better than the other? And therefore, from a Jamaati perspective, could you compare opportunities in India, Europe, especially Portugal, Canada and America? So this is really looking forward that, you know, once we are out of this corona, who's going to be ahead in the race and among some of these countries? Any thoughts on that Rafik Bhai?
Yes, thank you. So, let me just add to this V-shaped recovery discussion that other panelists have noted before I go on because it's relevant to this answer as well. Keeping that in mind, which countries will recover quickly? You know, Shah Zahir Bhai mentioned a few that he'd like to know about. My sense is China has, going to have a quick recovery as I already mentioned, so I won't spend more time on that. I think other East Asian economies, Japan, Taiwan, Korea, to some extent Hong Kong, Singapore will recover very quickly. Those that are going to recover very slowly within the Asia-Pacific setup are Indonesia, Malaysia, Vietnam, Laos and they all are either because of lack of resources or because of a wrong approach have delayed addressing the problem. When you start looking at the West, Western countries, within Europe, of course, there's a huge dichotomy of responses. And so what we're seeing is that Spain, Italy and even Britain have responded very poorly. Portugal has not been as badly affected. My sense is that they have not taken the Spanish approach of delaying too long to address the problem. So I think they would come out of it reasonably quickly, but one needs a little more research to look into that and I'll be happy to do that and get back with some details later. As I said, the US will recover quickly. I think Canada has relied on extensive testing as well. It's been a different sort of problem in Canada because of socialized medicine, you know. So they have the advantage of that, so they should recover fairly quickly as well. Britain I don't see as having addressed the problem well at all. And so I expect their recovery might take some more time. But you know, not, it won't be V-shaped, it might be more like a slow drawn-out recovery over, over next eight to ten months. Back to you.
Yep. Well, thank you very much Rafik Bhai for sharing that. And you know, before I come to really asking for concluding comments from each one of our panelists which is there, I'm sure that, you know, of our 216 odd participants who are there, many of you would be in a job and you would be employed and you know, if you are in a job, you must be asking yourselves, "What should I do? How do I ensure in terms of, you know, this whole element of job losses, et cetera? How do I really try and address that?" So I just want to share some quick thoughts with you and then I'm going to come to each of my panelists to give me their closing tips that are there. So let me address this aspect that if you are in a job, how do you really now deal with yourself and your career and your job over the next few months, next few quarters that are there? So number one aspect is, please try to hang on to your job, no matter what. I think over the next about twelve months, try to avoid job changes as much as you can. It's important that you have stability in the job that you have and try and be open to job transfers, salary cuts if it helps you to keep your job. I think in these times to hang on to a job is the most crucial one. Having been in the job, I'm going to suggest to you very quickly five strategies which are going to be important for you. Strategy number one, position yourself as a valuable contributor in your organization, in your team, to your boss. How do you do that? Try to look for opportunities to support your boss and your super boss who's there because remember, these are the people who are going to recommend who stays or who goes. So wherever you find an opportunity to support your boss, please try and do that. Be willing to stretch, be willing to take on additional responsibilities, put your hand up to take initiatives that are there, be there to support your boss, your team, your organization, that will keep you in good books that are there in terms of being seen as a valuable player. More and more, as the work from home is happening, you are not operating from your office, you're operating from home, don't let your personal productivity slip up. Keep your personal productivity high and keep updating your boss on a, on a, on a regular basis in terms of what you've been doing. So let your, let your boss know that you are a valuable contributor and despite all this work from home, you're working hard, you're putting in those stretch hours that are there, you know, do whatever deliverables you're supposed to. So that's strategy number one. Strategy number two, like some of our panelists talked about, use the downtime to skill up and roll for courses, certifications online and try to create an edge. Please remember, this is not a paid holiday. Use this time to get your edge so that, you know, you can very clearly give more value in the job that you're doing. So use this downtime to skill yourself up as much as you can. So that's strategy number two. Strategy number three, try to activate your networks that are there on LinkedIn, beyond LinkedIn. Link up with your ex-bosses, ex-colleagues, batchmates that are there, you know, as much as possible, stay politely connected. You never know which connection can be helpful for you. So try to keep your network activated, that's strategy number three. Strategy number four, prepare for the worst-case scenario. So worst-case scenario is a job loss, you get laid off. Start preparing for that right now in terms of your cash flows, your EMIs, your expense management which is there, any part-time job plans that are there. So prepare for the worst-case scenario if it were to happen. So that's strategy number four. And strategy number five is what I call the three P approach. So three Ps, focus on that. First P is positivity. You know, we had Mr. Rafik Malik talk to us about that. So try and stay positive as much as you can. Look at the glass half-full, keep your mental health in the right state, be positive, first P. Second P perseverance. Try to ensure, these are times where you need to stretch yourself, you need to persevere. So do that in the job role that you have. So perseverance, that's number two. And number three is prayer. You know, don't underestimate the power of prayer which is there. I think that's something that all of us need to be doing. So you know, that's the third P which is there. So those are my five, you know, strategies for those of you who are in a job on how to really manage these times coming forward. But as we come towards the closure of our webinar, I'm going to go across to each of our panelists and I'm going to ask them to share with our audience what are three tips that they will offer as their closing command to help us tide through this difficult time and also look for opportunities in terms of the silver lining, wherever it may be. So I'm going to follow the same order of first going to our first panelist which is Rafik Dosani, then I'll come to Murli and then I'm going to come to Rafik Malik to share their thoughts. So first, owe to you Rafik Bhai, Rafik Dosani, to give us your final tips to the, to our participants today.
Thank you. Yes, no, yours was a very inspiring set of comments, so I won't have much to add. But let me just say that I gave a talk to the US Jamat about a week ago on the same topic of COVID and what we can do to prepare. And the problems that they are facing are the very same issues that have arisen in today's call as well. And so even there, we were wondering what should be the next steps to prepare the Jamat well. One is, I think the issue is for small businesses is, what's your strategy? You know, you can really contribute if you're in, even in a job, working in a business as to help your employer, but even employers need to do this to think through, how do I address this COVID situation in a way that will make a difference? You know, a lot of people are thinking about this and I think EPP can usefully offer a service to the Jamat by helping them think through for their businesses as well as for their jobs, what is the best approach in terms of network building, in terms of training? It's very customized, it requires a lot of work, but I think there's, there's a lot that can be done. I think the next thing I would propose is that, you know, as was mentioned by some of us already, is that, you know, examine the ways in which you can work with with your bankers, with other businesses, with online providers. There's a lot out there in terms of resources, people are hungry to get those resources. You should recognize what is valuable and how you can address them. And third is, I would say, recognize you are not alone, you know. This, even within the Jamaati context, this is a problem being faced by everyone globally. And it's quite clear that the problems are the same and the solutions are also somewhat similar. So getting together not just with your networks locally, but with your networks globally, something I already mentioned in the case of supply chain is going to be very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much Rafik Bhai for those, you know, very practical tips that are there which keep us on a sensible plane as we move forward. Murli, I'm going to come to you. आप हमारे participants के लिए क्या आपके तीन tips देंगे जिससे के वो इन समय में अपने आप को संभाले और आगे बढ़ सके?
So if I look at the millennials, people who are born say nineteen ninety and ahead, probably they are going to deal with one of the first big crisis. Warren Buffett ने कहा है के if you buy things that you do not need, then you'll have to sell things that you need. And Rafik Malik साहब ने भी यही बोला, focus का बहुत ही जरूरत है इस बात. क्या होता है? भी accumulate overall period of time, बहुत सारे items. आप अभी देखें ना, आप घर पे बैठे हैं, आप कितने कम items के साथ आप अपना गुजारा कर रहे हैं? अब सोचिए, घर में कम करने वाले भी नहीं आते हैं, फिर भी आपका कम चल रहा है, ठीक है? The provisions are less, फिर भी आपका कम चल रहा है, किसी तरह से आपने adjust कर लिया इससे? I really think this is a time to go back to the drawing board and say, what is it that I can do new, different, better, more efficient so as to deal with this pain that all are going through? The only thing is, it's a very democratic pain, सबका हो रहा है pain, आपका भी हो रहा है, किसी को सौ रुपए से, असीर रुपए किसी का नुकसान हो गया, किसी का बीस रुपए से, दस रुपए नुकसान हो गया, लेकिन नुकसान सबका है, business सबका problem में है, so we are all in this together. That is what I would like to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much Murli for sharing that. I'll now go to our last panelist, Mr. Rafik Malik. Rafik Bhai, आपके तजुर्बे में आपने काफी सारा कुछ देखा है। आपके final क्या तीन tips आप हमारे participants को बताना चाहेंगे?
I think first of all, all of you have made very, very valid and good comments. I especially like the key comment from you. So all of you all have given very good advice. First of all, I want to express to a lot of the small businesses and entrepreneurs that I have a lot of confidence in you all. You all are far more nimble, you will be able to slowly recover much better than some of the large corporation. You all are far more adaptive, nimble and I have You all are far more adaptive, nimble, and I have confidence that you will slowly come back. So don't be very afraid. Don't be fearful. Have a lot of hope. You will have to take decisions. Take decisions with your head and your heart. You will have to take some tough decisions, but do it with as much caring as you can. It's very, very important that you use both the faculties together. And you will have to take some tough decisions, but do it gently, do it with a lot of empathy, do it with a lot of sympathy. So that's how it's going to, you will have to play out so that you can survive on this crisis. A lot of you have also mentioned about collaborative. I think it's a great time, a great opportunity to connect with friends, families, networks. Because you are going to need, you will get help and advice from places you least expect. Some of the places that you depend upon might even let you down. So it's a great time to find out where you can expect support, where you will get it, where you may not be able to unfortunately get it. Reach out. And remember, in every crisis, there is an opportunity. As some of you have mentioned, re-look at your business. There are a lot of aspects of even our business that I felt need correcting. This is a great time to take all the difficult decisions, readjust your business, redefine it, refocus it so that it remains relevant in the new times with the changed circumstances and changed customers. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much Rafik for sharing those words of wisdom which are so relevant for us. And you know, I will quickly give some of my closing comments before I hand over to Farah. And you know, I was just thinking, so you know, there is a race called Formula One Racing. So those of you familiar with that, Formula One Racing, the car is running at about thirty-five to thirty-one kilometers per hour. And the fastest car wins. But in that race, there is a time when they call it pit stop. There is a car that goes and stops completely. And when it stops, then they change the tire, or they add fuel, or they adjust something. And then after that, the race comes. So I think we are like in a pit stop right now. Whether you are employed, whether you are in SME business, we are now where we have come to a stop. We are at a pause which is there. What is going to be important is, in this pit stop, how well are you getting yourself ready when the race starts? Because the race is going to start, but the racetrack will be very different. You don't understand the racetrack smoothly. But what, how you are going to use this time during this pit stop and get yourself to be changed ready? I think that's going to be important. Over the years, when we talk to our clients on change, we say that change descends on everybody at the same time. But it is those people and those organizations who are able to recognize that change the fastest, respond to that change the fastest, and adapt themselves to the new change. Those are the ones who are change-ready and will be winners for the future. And I think that is important for all of us to recognize how we really take advantage of this change, think forward, and be ready for the change that is there and coming in front of us. So on that note, you know, Murli has a quick thought to say. So I am going to ask Murli first before I do the closure. Murli, yes.
Yeah. Sorry, a couple of minutes. You know, one other thing that we decided, Shabir, the day when this problem was started, is that this concept of work from home, we will pretend to be all team members, that whoever is employed at home, as far as we are concerned, business as usual. Through electronic medium called ETSR, we are monitoring every person who is at home. What is this contribution? What are they doing? And what is their contribution to the bank? For example, there is no difficulty in depositing terms. They can do it electronically. So we are talking about, and the stock market is very bad at this time, so there is no money. Therefore, we are asking customers, see, boss, our seven percent interest rate, you deposit terms. The second opportunity came. We have been selling very genuine good quality health insurance for customers for seven years. ICA Lombarde and Alitya Birla. All of a sudden, health insurance demand increased. You must believe, people think that they are getting health insurance. They used to say, how much should I spend? Now they say, hey, I will give you a health insurance right away. So opportunities are coming. I am not saying, I am using this opportunity to hurt people. But I am saying, if you are alert, you can definitely take advantage of the situation and do service to the customer. That is what I mean.
Absolutely. I think on that positive note of being changed ready, I am going to, you know, thank all our panelists that are there, Mr Rafik Dosani from Los Angeles, Murli, and also Rafik Malik. And Farah, I will hand it over back to you. Thank you so much for allowing me to, you know, be part of this particular panel discussion. Over to you Farah for the final closing.
Thank you so much to the esteemed panel. I learned a lot from you. I am sure all of you must have been making notes as well. I love the positive attitude and I think it really was very, very good as a listening for all of us. I just want to share with you that we are doing a lot of things as Economic Planning Board and we are hoping to help you through this crisis. We are going to start working with all our large cooperative credit societies so that we can make sure that credit is flowing where it is required. We want to work with all our alliances to ensure that vulnerable businesses are being taken care of. We are also trying to create, we are trying to build skills through various institutions so that we can help the Jamaats cope with this crisis better. And finally, we will continue to communicate with you throughout this crisis on all the various important updates, economy may, whatever new thoughts are coming our way. So we look forward to being in touch with you. Please stay safe and be positive. I hope we all come out of this much stronger. Thank you for attending and you are the master.